We're going to call a meeting in order. We're going to convene the board as the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board and as the Advanced Transportation District Board to start off our meeting and go over some of the things that we have, a large crowd, we're going to be able to cover some important information up front, and then we'll go into individual agendas separately. So with that, let's take a moment of, just have a moment of reflection and think for a while about the public purpose that we're here for. Thank you, I feel a lot better, I hope you all do too. With that, next week we're going to call for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any announcements?
Yes, sir, we have a number of announcements. So first of all, I would like to introduce Mr. Larry Roser, who is the President of Alamo Council of the Blind. Council of Blind has been advocating for blind and visually impaired people, persons in San Antonio and Bear County since 1986. ACB believes in independence, dignity, and equal quality of life opportunities for all persons who are blind or visually impaired, and their message and mission is to encourage and to assist people with visual impairments, to develop their abilities and attain their maximum potential in order to become fully participating and productive members within the community. Today, the Alamo Council of the Blind wants to recognize two individuals who have provided service beyond, above, and beyond what is required in serving persons with disabilities. So, Mr. Larry Roser would like to recognize Justin Wright, a VIA reservation agent, and Star Shuttle Driver John Cetera.
Hi, my name is Larry Roser, and I'm President of Alamo Council for the Blind, and who we are is about advocacy. Advocacy is equality in life, jobs, housing, and everything else that goes along with allowing people who are blind or with disabilities to live independently. The first award that I'm going to present is to a star, excuse me, to a reservation agent, Agent 35. We voted for Justin Wright to get this award because what we really love about Justin Wright is if you call him, he's never in a bad mood, he's always joyful, and if there's a way he could solve a problem, he'll solve the problem. And for this, for going out of his way to be very gracious to us, I'm presenting Justin Wright with this award. The next award we are going to present is to a longstanding Star Shuttle Driver. Like Justin Wright, he's one that goes beyond what is required for drivers, and so with this in mind, I am going to present this plaque to a great person, John Setera. Now, John, please frame this and just always remember, we love you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. April is National Poetry Month, and this was VIA's fifth anniversary of the Poetry on the Move program. There were 10 adult winners who were selected from nearly 200 submissions, and to add a youth element to the program, the library submits 10 young Pegasus poems. Those 20 poems, 10 adult and 10 youth, were given to four area art schools to illustrate, and during April, the poems and artwork were placed on our entire fleet for all to enjoy. And just so everyone knows, I choose four of my favorites and put them up in my office every year. So I'm onto my third plaque. In honor of our fifth anniversary, the state and city poet laureates, there are two laureateses, Rose Katakolas and Carmen Tofoya, were invited to submit poems as well. At the readings to kick off the Poetry Month, Carmen also read a wonderful bus poem that we were all moved by, and we invited her back here to share that today. And Carmen, while you're coming up, I'll just do a little of your intro if you don't mind. She's a native of the West Side Barrios of San Antonio and an experienced VIA bus writer, author of more than 20 books ranging from poetry and short stories to award-winning children's picture books. She has received many national and international book awards, and in 2012 was named by Mayor Julian Castro as San Antonio's first poet laureate.
Laureate.
Laureate. Laureate. There we, I'm sorry. It's Greek to me, yes.
It is.
Called by Alex Haley, I thought this was so impressive, called by Alex Haley, a world-class writer. She's received the Art of Peace Award for work which contributes to peace, justice, and human understanding. She has been inducted into the Texas Institute of Letters for Outstanding Literary Achievement, and has presented her one-woman theatrical performances in London, Madrid, Mexico City, Norway, Germany, France, Canada, New Zealand, throughout the United States, and she is here to present to us this evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's an honor being with all of you. This is kind of like a coliseum, I don't know where to turn, that I don't give my back to somebody, so I'll do my best, but I may be swishing around a bit. I want to dedicate this to everyone that is involved in making the buses run, that everybody that drives the bus, everybody that makes sure the buses are in good shape, everybody that rides the bus. The poem is called "To You Riding the Bus," but we wouldn't be riding the bus if there weren't a whole bunch of other people helping that happen. And I'm very grateful to you. I rode the bus when I was a child to get to the doctor's office, or the grocery store, or downtown. I rode the bus to get to high school, I rode the bus to get to college. I more recently rode the bus to get to Luminaria because you didn't have to worry about parking your car. We still depend on and feel very fortunate to have a good bus system in this city. So, this is to all of you who are in any way involved with the bus, to you riding the bus. Sail smoothly down these streets, sweet spirits from past siglos around you, blooming in your calloused hands, the cinnamon on your skin, the daring dreams sparkling from your eyes. Sail down these streets in this bus like some such a milgo barge, floating through timeless currents draped in multicolored flowers, faces that blossom from every seat in which you sit, singing the colors of life. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Carmen, that was fantastic, and I think something that we can all, you're right, we're all in it together, and it's the folks that make the buses work and the folks that ride the bus and take advantage of transportation, but we're all part of the community, and we all grew up with that as well, and so that's important.
Thank you so much, Carmen, good to see you again. And speaking of which, we have some frontline staff that we'd like to recognize for some extraordinary achievements tonight. So first of all, the APTA Bus and Paratransit Conference will open this weekend in Kansas City, and APTA has reached out across the country to identify bus operators that have exemplary, and when I say that, I really mean exemplary safety records. So they've identified three bus operators from across the country, and guess what? Two of them are from VIA. They are being recognized for having 40 years or more of safe driving, and so first of all, if they come forward, Jesse Quintero, badge 176. He was hired in August of 1965 and retired in December of 2001 after 36 years as a full-time operator, then he returned a year later as a part-time operator. He's a recipient of 1 million, 2 million, and 3 million mile Safe Driving Awards. Our second operator is Manuel Valdez, badge 221. He was hired September 1967, retired in December 2001 after 34 years, returned the following month as our part-time operator, continues today, recipient of 1 million and 2 million mile Safe Driving Awards. I'm sure you're closing in on three, and received numerous commendations for courtesy toward our passengers, so kudos, I mean, 3 million miles, fantastic. One of the events that will take place in Kansas City is the North American Bus Rodeo, and every agency has their own bus rodeo and promotes folks from their rodeos to the international rodeo. On the way to, from the local rodeo to the national rodeo is the state rodeo, and the state rodeo took place in Fort Worth just last weekend, and I'm very pleased to announce that we took first place among bus operators of 40-foot buses, we took first place in the state among van operators, and on the maintenance side, we sent two teams, and our teams placed second and third. So first of all, that's extraordinary, so let's. So, Mr. Dominguez, are you here? Excellent. Winner of the 40-foot bus rodeo. So he'll participate in the national, he received a certificate of merit for 14 years, 14 years, safe driving, and numerous commendations for courtesy to our passengers. He's been in seven rodeos and won six of them here. Retired. Yeah, exactly. And we are looking forward to him winning the national, at which point, well, I guess we'll force retire him on this end, right? But don't let that keep you away from winning. So congratulations. Our van winner is Robert Kalunga. Robert, excellent. He's been a van operator with VIA since October of 2000, a native of San Antonio, enjoys spending time with his kids, and going to the movies and other fun activities. He has participated in five state rodeos, he placed, he placed in third place twice, and then recently won first place in Fort Worth, so congratulations. And we have two maintenance teams I'd like to recognize, so the team number two finished second overall, which is Ernest Avaya, Marcos Lopez, and Ismael Gonzalez. Are you here?
There they are.
VIA's team number one finished third overall, members Carlos Fuentes, Donald Smalsel, and Both teams were coached by Phil Davis, who is a past, what, national winner. VIA maintenance teams have traditionally competed well at state and international rodeos over the past four years. The VIA team has placed second, first, first, and seventh at the international rodeo. Team number one will go to represent VIA at this year's international rodeo this coming weekend, so good luck to y'all, and we'll have another one in our roster, right? We will see you there, thank you, congratulations. I'm still going.
One more.
Well, one more. And this really does go to the team, we're all a team, we have, we've recognized mechanics, we've recognized operators, but we have administrative staff that support all the operation as well, and after all, all of us who receive paychecks are very grateful to those people. And so, today we are here to recognize that the Government Finance Officers Association of the US and Canada is pleased to announce that VIA Metropolitan Transit has received the GFao's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity, it reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, entity has to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. And Steve Lange? Steve is here, and I don't know whether, is Rick or Lorna, are either of them here? I'd recognize Steve Lange, who is our CFO, and then Rick Betts and Laura Padalecki. They, as I think I've told you often before, that when I was in Houston, we had about a dozen people dedicated to our budgeting process, and that Steve, Rick, and Lorna do this as a part of their day job, and bringing home a recognition like this is a fine achievement. Thank you very much. The last thing I'd like to just say is that I know that over the last week, we have seen discussion in the media about the firefighters and their response to the streetcar system, and we've had discussion at the IGR and Public Affairs Committee about our messaging, et cetera. I just want everybody here to know that the staff has been working on responses to that, that we have called in the chairman of that committee, and our chairman here, to give us advice, and as we are ready to put things forward, I'll be sending them all to you, but when you receive them, I didn't want you to receive them in that vacuum, and so I just offer up, if you have any questions about that, that both the chairman of the committee and the chairman of the board are available to answer those questions, but I just wanted you to know that the staff is working with the support and counsel of the board in responding to that. And that is my report.
Thank you very much, Jeff, and I think I might just elaborate on that, point out that we've offered to meet with some of the entities involved, the Firefighters Association and the San Antonio Police Officer Association, and we're hoping to get a response. In fact, I think the police officers said they would like to have a briefing on it, so we're going to be doing that in the coming weeks. I think it's important that we get the facts out, and to come up with a strategy to get the facts out. We're also working on, and that's a short-term strategy, we're working on a longer-term plan to deal with our overall communications strategy, and we'll bring that back to the IGR Public Affairs Committee next week, I believe is the meeting, and we'll bring, on the 8th of May, we'll bring that back, the board sits as a committee, the whole, have a chance to review the update on that as well, and hopefully we'll have that ready by next, early next week. So with that, that brings us next to our next item on the agenda, Citizens to Be Heard.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine citizens to be heard today. As your name is called, you're welcome to come to the front to make your comments, or if you'd rather make your comments from where you sit, please raise your hand and a microphone will be brought to you. Our first citizen is Veronica Rodriguez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, VIA staff, and my fellow writers. My name is Veronica Rodriguez. I'm originally from Roberto, Texas. After high school, I went and, I went to UT Austin, graduated from there, then moved to San Antonio, which is my favorite city now. I won't live anywhere else but here. I came to San Antonio in 1980. I immediately found employment as a case manager, and worked only the website with different social programs and high-risk families. I went, I was throughout the city, driving on my own, home visits, et cetera, then unfortunately, I suffered a stroke in 2010, and I became disabled. I was, I was limited just to staying home, I had no transportation anymore, I couldn't drive, I became very depressed, and then finally I realized, wait a minute, I don't have to continue like this, so I got myself on the VIA Trans program, got back into the community, I go to trainings, I go to community meetings, and it's all through VIA, all through the VIA Trans. My children are already grown, have their own families and lives, so I solely depend on the VIA Trans for my transportation needs, and they have thoroughly helped me to improve the quality of my life, literally. Recently, within the last six months, I've seen a little change in the services, and I believe I've heard, after my nosing around, I, I heard that there was a new rule, the 30-minute rule, because of something, a national comparison study or something. Well, I will, I'm respectfully suggesting that the board please look at this and reconsider, see what the impact has been on us writers, because the services have really, when I first got on the program in 2011, when I said, when they told me they'll be there at 8, they were there at 8. We'll be there at 8:30, they were there at 8:30, and now, heaven knows when they're going to get there. So also, I realized through my research, I went through the VIA website, screen by screen, I didn't see very much information on our program, the VIA Trans program, for the disabled citizens of San Antonio. I didn't see any statistics on what has been happening through the years. When it first got started, I saw a history on the VIA Metropolitan program, but not on our program. So I would like to please request that the board consider, also maybe looking into a vision, mission for this program, where are we going to be in five years? Where are we going to be in 10 years? Is the disabled population growing, are VIA Trans buses going out further outside of 14? So I think I'm going to close because I'm running out of time, but really, VIA, I feel so fortunate. I'm so fortunate, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me to get me back into the community and keeping my appointments, my medical appointments. Thank you so much, I appreciate you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker has time yielded to him from Edward Reed and David Benavides for a total of nine minutes, Tom Cummins.
Mr. Bruseno, members of the board, Mr. Arnt, my name is Tom Cummins, and I'm President of the San Antonio AFL-CIO. In recognition of the need for extended mass transportation, the San Antonio Central Labor Council unanimously endorsed a resolution in support of streetcars on September 25th of last year. Tonight, I would like to read that resolution to you. Whereas the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority provides the San Antonio area with the best of all transit service, and has won many awards for its innovation and efficient operations, and whereas VIA is completing a process to bring streetcar service to San Antonio, which will bring economic benefits to our city and its citizens, and whereas the jobs created through the construction of said streetcar service, in addition to jobs that will be created with new businesses, the new streetcar service will be a definite benefit to the economy of San Antonio, and whereas the operators and additional maintenance personnel of said streetcars will be eligible to become members of Local 694 of the Amalgamated Transit Union, a great and dedicated labor union, whose leadership and membership is commended for their award-winning skills and knowledge. Therefore, be it resolved that the San Antonio Central Labor Council hereby endorses and supports the building of said streetcar service, and commends and congratulates both the city of San Antonio and Bear County elected officials for their strong and supportive leadership on this issue, and be it further resolved that recognition and congratulations is especially merited by the past and present VIA Ward of Trustees for their diligence and time-consuming efforts to make our transit service the best it can be for VIA's ridership, and assure that San Antonio continues its march into the future of transit services. Again, that was passed on the 25th of September of last year. I would like to add a couple of comments. First, there's been talk of trying to have a vote on whether we should have these streetcar improvements. I would like to emphasize that capital improvements by the city, by the county, by other municipalities are done routinely and do not require a vote, and the San Antonio AFL-CIO stands very strongly in opposition to any vote occurring. We are excited about having a streetcar service. The working men and women of San Antonio deserve it, more importantly, they need it. Our members, in many, many cases, get to work currently by the bus. In the future, we hope that more of our members will actually use mass transportation, which will be available through streetcars. So we are very excited about this project, and you have our full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
VIA trustees, VIA board trustees, is I Damon Mason. There's a rather weird thing about Fiesta San Antonio, I'm glad it arrived, but not disappointed when it departs. Quite perplexing. One thing for which I want answers is why this isn't the response from the March 2014 board meeting took until late April to arrive. If you have been prompt with this being sent out during the first week of April, you could enjoy, you could enjoy if you had like everyone else. Further playing matters, you completely ignored a part of my diatribe again. While we are on the subject, why do you want, why do your sentries want me to turn on my cellphone and see inside my refillable cup, despite I haven't been told there's ice water in it? Now, the part of my diatribe that last month I gave you that you ignored, I'll recite it now. What really angered me about your response to CAF number 356,607 is that you completely ignored the point I was trying to make. Having the necessary 210 million to construct the first phase of downtown streetcars is nice, still, you ignore some very anguished dynamics that are at play. What we behave toward as the US dollar is actually a promissory note from the Federal Reserve, a private bank, that is neither federal nor reserve nature behavior. The dollar bills in your wallet, how many times do you think they've changed hands? Please understand those promissory notes were printed as US dollars as soon as they were printed, and the interest compounds each time it changes hands. Think long and hard about what that means. At some point, that principle will have to be repaid in full. Once China and Russia finish on ironing out the details to their allies about how to set up a trade system to isolate the United States away from the global economy with trade embargoes, not unlike what was done with Cuba, what do you think will happen here in the United States? Let me contribute some food for thought to that confrontation. That 210 million dollars that you are so proud of saying in that streetcar will be worthless. Your mainline, sir, Van Tress, nope, sorry, this old-grown Adobe Hut, did you call it, VIA Metro Center? Kiss that goodbye, we can all pay the private taxes, let alone powering the building. Now, I want to also append that, that VIA Metropolitan Transit does not, does not need to do any more business with North American bus industries. Northern American bus industries has a lengthy prologue of constructing, of constructing mainline transit buses that are a little more than over glorified cattle trailers, and especially, eventually, via primo, that motor coach is a human torture chamber on wheels. Even if there's not a single pothole in the road, this is what the thing does, it jerks back and forth, it jerks back and forth as it goes down, as it goes down the street. And, and, and if it ever has to promise to get a passenger entertained at the southbound Weasal Station, that motor coach takes, that motor coach takes forever to get up to highway speed, to get up highway speed, and it's just, no, no, no.
Terry Burns.
Hi, thank you, I represent the local Sierra Club, and I strongly support the streetcar, we do, and I'm thrilled to hear the support of the local AFL-CIO. I'd like to extend some comments I made a month ago. I think that the streetcar is very important for San Antonio's future mobility plans, as you've drawn out in more extensive studies, and I think the community really needs to understand how important this is for some of the disabled people we've heard from, for getting around so we actually have choices of transit, we're not We're not forced to buy automobiles and ride freeways. I think that multimodal transit, including streetcars, the way of the future all over the world and very important for our inner area in 410 development. And also, I think it should be emphasized, critical for our air quality in this area. I've been to ACOG meetings and read the data. Our air quality is on the verge of non-attainment. It's a critical issue, not only if we go into non-attainment for our economic growth, but also for our health. And as a physician, I'm very concerned about that and have some familiarity with that issue. I think that streetcars are a real important part of this process. No money should be spent expanding 281, just adding to sprawl, adding to air pollution. We have already planning, it's just as sprawl planning. We need planning for smart growth in San Antonio, multimodal transportation, transportation options. At the same time, I think people who have concerns about gentrification and downtown redevelopment and streetcars affecting that, those are very valid and important concerns that need to be better addressed. We've seen a really bad example with the recent trailer park situation. That should not happen. The whole process in the area, in the city should be very sensitive to gentrification issues and bring people to the table and work out good ways to both improve our downtown development and our transportation options and not have people feel dispossessed in the process. Thank you very much and keep up the good work and get out a better message, both about the importance of this and the air quality. Thank you.
Ferris Hodge.
Now, that was VIA's theme song about 25 years ago. I'm gonna sing that one more time. It's so easy when you take the bus, VIA, VIA. Now, I think we need to bring that theme song back, but it's probably copyrighted, but I don't care. Now, VIA, VIA think they can sue anybody and get away with it. So VIA and our new CEO went to Austin to try to stop VIA from, with the streetcar. So I'm gonna read this into existence. VIA Metropolitan Administration District, E-T-A-L dot dot dot, car's number, D dash one dash G N dash 13 dash 004230. In the District Court of Travis County, 126 jurisdiction. So I'm gonna say to VIA, it's not gonna work. The fire department, they're not gonna get no pay raise. The police department is not gonna get no pay raise. VIA's employees don't get a pay raise. I want to know, I'm gonna do an open records request. How much money did VIA make last week for Fiesta? Believe me when I say how much I love you. Now, the next thing we want to talk about, crossroads parking lot, ranouts parking lot need to be torn down and rebuilt. Believe me when I say how much I care. The Primo route is a joke. The new fare boxes is a joke. VIA should not put any more advertisement on the bus. And Mr. Gonzalez might want to say, well, Ferris, what are you talking about? You ride these buses, you cannot see the address at night, day, evening, or whatever. So, Mr. Gonzalez, will you tell to VIA not to do that anymore? Forgive me, give me peace of mind. All I need is time to prove my love to you. Da-da-da-da. Now, what is the Tiger Grant? VIA put in for a Tiger Grant application. And I don't know what that is. But I want to say to VIA, y'all can hang in there all you want, but we are not gonna let you run over us like y'all have in the past. Just worth put four people in existence. Bobby Pettis is one of them, Mr. Bruseno is one, and two other people, and some more people. And the city put people in this system. But we, the people of San Antonio, Texas, Bear County, is not gonna let y'all run over us. We're gonna be here at every meeting protesting. And I got my own TV show, Channel 4, no, Channel 5 with Downtown City Hall. And they say, well, we're full. And I said, I got my own TV show on Channel 21. It's the hottest show in town. Ferris Hodge Jr. TV Show. Wake up and smell the coffee.
Ed Cross.
Will you be singing?
You don't want me to sing. Good evening, Alex and trustees, ladies and gentlemen. First, before I begin my remarks, thank you for your service. I've served on similar boards and I know the time and the effort you put in to prepare for these meetings and the time these meetings take. So as a citizen, I want to thank you for the time that you serve on these committees. My name is Ed Cross. I'm a commercial real estate broker and a property owner downtown. And I'm coming to you tonight in support of the streetcar. I'm coming in support of VIA and I'm coming in support of the board in its efforts to build a streetcar. The question is, why a streetcar? And I think there's several good reasons that you need to consider and you need to publicize as you go forward with this effort. First, it helps make our downtown streets more friendly for pedestrians and bicycles. Second, makes the central business district more appealing to companies. One of the reasons that I've been a success as a real estate broker was I brought Southwest from Bell to San Antonio in 1992. And they loved our downtown. And one of the things we're gonna see, I think, over the next 10 years, are businesses return to downtown. It's time. Every other major city in Texas and in America has seen that rebirth of the corporate citizen downtown. And the streetcar will help make that happen. Number three, where the rails go, economic development will follow. We have three great examples of that. In Portland, they've built two phases of streetcar. One was eight miles long, one was 7.2 miles. And in that, in and around the streetcar, within two blocks of the streetcar line in Portland, they've had $3.5 billion in economic impact. That's over 10,000 housing units and 5.4 million square feet of office space. In Seattle, they've done two phases, 1.3 miles and 2.5 miles. They've had 2.5 billion in economic development. Now, let me be personal. I'm the father of two millennials. And like all millennials, they want to live in a walkable urban environment. They don't want to be dependent upon a car. And unfortunately, they're not coming back to San Antonio. One's going to Seattle and one's going to Houston. And I want a streetcar to get my sons back. And their mother wants them back. You need no further than today's Wall Street Journal. And on the front page of the Wall Street Journal is an article on Texas. And it mentions San Antonio, but let me read you the closing line from Austin. "We are in an unbelievable pinch point where our congestion is horrific, but it will be 15 years at a minimum before we can provide high-volume alternatives," says Ryan Robinson, Austin's demographer. Don't let us get to that point.
Willie May Clay.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I haven't been here in a while. But I don't think you've missed me. I was coming last month. But I was met by a staff member and said, Willie May's citizens to be hurried is over. Well, I was a little disappointed, but in this country, we always have a second chance. Almost missed it today. But VIA made special attempts to get me here today. My van arrived late, but VIA made some accommodations, and I'm not going into detail. I'll leave that comment on comment line. I'm here today to ask the board to review the outcomes, the effects of that 30-minute window that you approved mid-last year. Just as the previous person indicated, she didn't know when the van would come. Well, I want you to know that VIA has a way of identifying not only where the van is, but when the van arrived, when it's scheduled to get to its destination, or whether it showed up late. There are a lot of stakeholders in this policy that you approved last year. Chairman Bruseno, you weren't here. And I'm not gonna, I don't have the time to reiterate or explain the 30-minute window. But I want you to know your predecessor was very, very interested in how it would affect the riders. And I'm asking the board, look at the effects, not only on the riders, the effect it's having on the drivers and the schedulers and any other persons that are involved in this 30-minute window. We were told when the staff brought it to the board that it would be, it would be effective in being, helping VIA Trans be more accountable to the funding source. Well, we want that to happen, but we also want you to find out what's happening to the stakeholders.
Mr. Chairman, there are no more citizens to be hurt.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, what we'll do now is, if it's okay with the board, recess the VIA board meeting and move back to the Advanced Transportation District Board meeting. And the first item on the agenda, under the ATD agenda, is the consent agenda. I think you all have the chance to review the information on the consent agenda. Are there any desire to pull any items or discuss anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chairman, move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that brings us into our presentation on the ATD Past President Future Workshop Summary that we held last week. And making that presentation will be Clay Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name's Clay Smith and I'm the director of the Advanced Transportation District or Service, is that in that position. What I like to do this evening is go over kind of a summary of the past portion of the presentation that I gave at the workshop earlier this month and went back and put into the presentation some of the comments there and added some additional information to help in our discussion. And it's fitting that we're looking at the past because it was 10 years ago in 2004 that there was an election and that approved the sales and use tax at ATD for this, for the San Antonio area. The legislation granted VIA the authority to hold an election and create the Advanced Transportation District, which was a one-quarter of one cent's sales and use tax for the ATD service area. The service area is the principal municipality in this area, which is the city of San Antonio. And it was broken into really three parts. Many call them three pots or three sections to it. The main part was the 50% was for VIA and for public transportation support. 25% was for the city of San Antonio and 25% for TexDOT and Bear County. The VIA's portion, that portion of the 50%, of the ATD sales and use tax, you see each and every year in the form of the budget that's approved and the operations. And I'll go into a little bit more specifically what it covers, but it covers the public transportation that you see each year and the board approves as a part of the budget. The city of San Antonio's portion of the sales and use tax, the 25%, this is, monies are passed through directly to the city of San Antonio for streets, highways, and related infrastructure. So that portion is the only portion that really doesn't come back to the ATD board. The 25% for TexDOT, Bear County, this is the leverage portion of the sales and use tax and it is approved by the ATD board and also the MPO to leverage other federal and state dollars in this community and to accelerate projects in many times greater than 10 to 20 years in order to get them implemented today. This portion of the sales and use tax has been fully leveraged with planned and committed projects for the next 25 years. And so as we go, as I go through the presentation, you'll see as it kind of show what the cash portion of the ATD tax is, but in this portion, it actually has a bonding portion that extends beyond the present time and well into the future. It shows over the last 10 years, beginning in 2005, and the sales and use tax began during the fiscal year, and that's why you see the smaller portion at $10 million. But you can see over time, it's continued to grow all the way through last year, almost $54 million. And this year, in 2014, we've budgeted and on pace to see almost $56 million of ATD sales tax come to, as a part of that whole pie. The distribution, this is on the cash basis of the ATD net sales and use tax. There's over, since the beginning, almost $408 million has been collected, 200, over 203 million on the 50% of VIA's and then almost 102 million for each, the city of San Antonio and TexDOT Bear County. And let me just go through each of the parts and just show kind of what each have been doing over the last 10 years and kind of where that money goes. On the VIA Transit side, the largest portion of the sales and use tax has been in the express and limited bus service. It is for the operations and service of our express buses. And then we have also the van pool service. The Primo bus, one that many forget, is funded through the ATD sales tax, transit technology. And Starlight service that had been discontinued was also a part of the ATD sales tax, and it totals to over $203 million. And this shows the service of the express bus services, the BRT, Primo bus, skip service, and other express services throughout the community, all bringing people to and from the downtown area and also along the Loop 410, Loop 13 areas that circulate San Antonio. On the Bear County TexDOT portion, this is the leverage portion of the sales and use tax and the $270 million, and this includes the bonding, it doesn't include the interests associated with the bonding, but it's actually the amount that goes directly to what would, what people would see on the ground or in the, in the transportation field. The $270 million has leveraged $863 million worth of infrastructure or a total... The $270 million has leveraged $863 million worth of infrastructure, or a total project cost of over $1.1 billion for this community, and, and that equates to about a three-to-one ratio for leveraging. And so this ATD board and Tex- dot Bear County have been the partners in bringing transportation, accelerating transportation in this area. This is a map, just shows the distribution of those projects around the city. And when you look at the actual $270 million leverages, just the, the ATD funds itself, 83%, if you think of it in terms of beginning at the CBD, Central Business District, and radiating out beyond 1604, 83% of those funds have been inside of Loop 410, down to the Central Business District. 11% have been inside of 1604, including 410, and then 6% have been outside of Loop 1604 to the Bear County line. If you look at the total...
Opposite way.
Clay.
Go back.
You did that the opposite way.
You reversed it. The CBD to inside 410 is 6%. And then 1604 out...
You're right. You're right. I apologize. I apologize.
But otherwise, you were right.
You're right. Let me, I had the percentages right. You're right. 6, 6%...
I think you had the perceptions right.
You're right. Very high maintenance. 6% is inside of 410. 11% is between 410 and 1604, and 83% outside of 1604. Thank you for correcting me on that. If we look at the total project value, which is the $1.1 billion, 10% is inside of 410 to the CBD, 18% is inside of 1604 to Loop 410, and 72% of those total dollars are outside of Loop 1604. We look at the, the city of San Antonio, and, and fiscal year 2014 is the, is the city budgets their funds. They were budgeting $16.7 million toward the Advanced Transportation District, and this just came from their, their budget. And when we look at their, the projects that they have used the ATD dollars on over the last 10 years, we see traffic signals and intersection improvements, and with that is over 1,300 traffic signals, and that includes retiming and vehicle detection and emergency preemption as a part of that. You see school and pedestrian improvements. That includes 73 miles of sidewalks and ADA ramps at intersections, pedestrian signals, and also school flashing lights, warning lights. Also includes bus pad constructions, construction, and there's over 283 pads that have been associated with the ATD. On the bicycles, they've seen 140 miles of bicycle-related improvement, some of it maybe just striping the roadway, but those are part of those improvements using ATD funds. Had street maintenance included in this, they cited 21 separate projects, and then also studies and analysis as a part of the city's portion of the ATD tax. And their distribution, as I talked to the city, is distributed equitably among the various council districts, and so they see a fair representation throughout the, the city of San Antonio area. The last portion I want to talk about is kind of the ATD fut- future is what I had marked it in the workshop, and I want to talk about the existing service area for the ATD service. The area that's shown in the middle of the city of San Antonio, that's also the, the VIA service area. The, the areas, the suburban areas within the city of San Antonio, we denote those that are, that are in the service area, those that are in the service area, but they're not, none of them are a part of the ATD service area. And that's because, at the time of the election, not all of the suburban cities were able to support a quarter cent sales tax in their, as a part of the, their sales tax, because it, the way it reads in the law is 6% of the sales tax is state, and then 2% you have locally, and so they had act, they were actually maxed out on theirs in many of the areas, or could not fulfill the full quarter cent. And I know it's a, it's a busy slide, trying to provide a lot of information, but this is, these are the areas, suburban areas, that are within the VIA service area, and they're also a part of the, but, but they're in the service area, but they're not on the ATD, part of the ATD sales tax itself. We show the population of each of the suburban cities, also show the city sales and use tax, and this information I got from, through the comptroller's website, and they have two different areas. They have one area that shows the percent tax, and it breaks it down from the city, you see it from the city to a county, to transit, to special use, it's for a variety of uses that you see broken out in the comptroller's spreadsheets. When it comes to the actual dollars, it, it shows it as the city's sales tax, it doesn't accumulate all the, the total sales tax, the 2%, it just pulls out what the city has shown, and so that's, that's why I showed the 20, in the middle, the 2013 sales and use tax city, because that's the portion the city actually has as a part of the sales and use tax. The 20, next to it, the 2013 total sales and use is what is the total sales and use for that community, because it may include transit, it may include, or not in this case transit, but it may have other special uses. If, if one was to apply the quarter cent to those areas that could, had that much available in their sales and use tax, if they were, if they had less than a quarter, I didn't, I didn't look at a number. Only those that had a quarter cent available, for instance, Alamo Heights had a quarter cent, percent available, and so if you took the 2013 sales and use percentage that went to that city, in this case, 1.25, and did the ratio between a quarter and the 1.25% over what was actually received in 2013, it would be $224,000. And that's, that would be the same then on all of, if you, so if you added up the entire service area, those cities that are in the service area, but they're not in the ATD according to the election, for 2013, it's approximately just under $400,000 is what that number would have generated in 2013, if they had been a part of the ATD sales tax. When we look at the areas that are outside of the VIA service area but in Bear County, it's a, it's a small list that has a quarter cent, a percent available to the city, and that's Gray Forest, Halotas, and Shirts. Shirts was a little harder to figure, and that's the reason I put the plus and minus, because their portion of the city is also in Guadalupe Counties and Comal County, and so as we're trying to break down how much of that, of the city of Shirts, city of their 9.7 million was in Bear County, it's not, it's not shown that way, and that would take more research to see how much of that portion was just in Bear County and not in Comal and Guadalupe, which that number reflects the entire, and so I just divided by three to get, kind of get a, kind of a relative idea of how much that might be. And so those areas outside of the service area but in Bear County is a little, little over, a little under $800,000 towards the, that could be towards the, the sales tax. Then if we look regionally, the new areas that are now incorporated into the MPO, and that would include New Braunfels, the Comal County, New Braunfels, Bolverde, Garden Ridge, then if you look in Kendall and Comal, Fair Oaks, and Bernie, and Kendall County, and I went to Seguin, all of them are already maxed out at 2%. Most of theirs, they have 1.5 on the city's sales tax side, but the other half cent is to the county. So that concludes what I wanted to bring back and summarize and bring some additional information, and just welcome any comments that you might have.
Thank you, Clay, for that presentation. Any questions, Mr. Smith?
No, I'm sorry, this is for, for the board to discuss.
He'll be happy to meet with you after the meeting and... Any questions of the board members? Okay, thank you for that report.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't fast enough on the, on the draw.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw you.
You saw me flinching. I, I missed the presentation, and I apologize to the board and you, because I've been wanting this kind of presentation, and I had a client meeting that I couldn't avoid, but, you know, I always think that it's telling that although we are lucky to have the ATD, it is actually still putting us only at what I consider is 75% of where our comparable entities are throughout, major metropolitan entities throughout the state. So although we've done a lot of good, I, it makes me see that we could have done perhaps twice as much good if we'd had the full capacity to collect like our sister entities in Dallas and Houston and other places. And when I think that's just going to be an ongoing challenge for us as, as a community as I, as we go forward, I think we need to sort of face that, because I think there's a lot of good in those numbers, and it tells a great story of, of the good that we can do, but it also unfortunately reflects that challenge that we're, we're weighed down by, it seems. So I thank you anyway for enlightening us with this. I was hoping those numbers were bigger from those communities, that's the other thing I would, I would reflect back. But I would, I would encourage us to continue to look at opportunities for us to, to fill gaps in, in how we are able to meet our mission. So thanks, Clay.
And the, and the numbers, again, I've just taken off the website, it, it could be spending more time looking at them, but I think it gives us a good idea as to kind of relatively where, where we are in terms of the other areas and the amount of ATD tax that could still be there.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, that was just a briefing, right? No action required. Do we have a legal briefing scheduled for the Advanced Transportation District Board?
No.
Nope. Okay, if that's the case, we're going to adjourn the meeting of VIA sitting as the Advanced Transportation District Board and reopen and re, from our recess on sitting as the board of VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority. And with that, consider item number five, which is our consent agenda. And you all have all had a chance to review the items on the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions, any items that you'd like to have withdrawn to be considered individually? Hearing none. The chairman entertained a motion to approve.
No move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Last chance for any questions. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number six, and this was actually at the executive committee pool, they asked to have a detailed presentation, and that would be a presentation on our fuel hedging police policy review, and I believe Steve's making that presentation.
There's a variety of information on our fuel hedging program, included in your board packet. I'm going to focus specifically on the one policy change that we're recommending, and just make a few brief comments on that. And if there's anything else you'd like me to be, to address, I'd be glad to do that. The policy change that we're recommending is that we change the number of months, the limit on how far we can hedge out in the future from, excuse me, from 60 months to 36 months, and so we'll go from five years down to three years. We took a look at a number of factors in making that decision. One is that we don't envision ourselves ever wanting to hedge 60 months out. We also took a look at what other agencies are doing, we looked, took a look at what our counterparties are doing, and kind of took a look at what best practices are. There is a sentence in the memo that says that counterparties typically will not hedge that far in advance, and so I just want to clarify on that. We talked to, a couple of different ways to look at it, but I did talk to folks that we hedge with, and they said that their counterparties, and specifically other transit agencies typically will not go out more than three years. I also checked with our counterparties, and, and we've had three counterparties that we've hedged with in the past or are currently hedging with. Two of the three have three-year limits for at least some of their fuels. We have a hedge in place with British Petroleum. British Petroleum will only go three years out on ULSD, although on, for instance, natural gas, they will go out for, for 20 years, and that's because of the liquidity of the market. It's a much more liquid market with, with natural gas than it is for ULSD. Another party that we have hedges with is Coke Supply and Trading. Coke Supply and Trading has a three-year limit on both propane and unleaded gasoline. They will go out five years with ULSD, which is ultra-low sulfur diesel. And then our third counterparty is Shell. Shell will go five years out on all products. Checked with DART, Houston Metro. Houston Metro will only go out two years, and DART will go out five years. Took a look at our results over the hedging program period from inception to present. We implemented the program about five years ago, and so we've had settlements in FY 10, 11, 12, 13, and part of 14. We've saved in that period $6.9 million in fuel costs over what we would have otherwise paid for fuel. And so I took a look, I wanted to see if you compared, if you took a look at the settlements and compared the month of the settlement, and took a look at how far you out you were from the date that the contract was signed, 6.2 million of the 6.9 million occurred in months where we were more than 12 months out from the date that the contract was signed. And so if you looked within a one-year window, we've had about $700,000 attributable to settlement months that were 12 months or less from the date that the contract was signed, and again, the other 6.2 million was 12 months and greater. And of that 6.2 million, only $300,000 occurred in months where we had settled in a month that was more than 24 months out from the date the contract was signed. And so that $300,000 is really a subset of the 6.2 million that was the universe, you know, greater than the year. And so that's kind of just some fun facts on, on looking at the figures. That's the change we're recommending, going from five years to three years, and if you would like...
The finance guy would say fun facts.
Ask any questions about that, or any other aspects of the policy?
You did say, you said fun facts, did you say fun fact?
Yes.
Any questions?
Have you, Mr. Chairman, have you skewed the numbers as in a two-year, 24-month window? Because a lot of things could happen three years with the actual fuel age.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you clarify on it, make sure I address your question?
What I mean is, you have a 36-month that you're looking at now as a policy change. Is there any way to look at it? Is that 24-month policy change possibly? If you, did you run the numbers between the two possibly? Because in two years, you know, I could see the market being semi-stable. But in the three years, it could, it could fluctuate, we could produce a lot more domestically. So in a three-year span, that may be a, a little bit long.
Sure, and, and so again, looking at the month of settlement and how many months out you are from the date that the contract was signed, of that 6.9 million that we've saved over the life of the program, we had only $300,000 that was settled in months that were more than 24 months out from the date that the contract was signed. There was only $300,000, so the vast majority of it was in the greater than 12, less than 24 months out from the date that the contract was signed, because the amount where... date that the contract was signed. Because the amount where we were at least 12 months, more than 12 months out when we settled relative to the contract signing date was 6.2 million of the 6.9, and only $300,000 of that was beyond the 24-month period. That being said, we've got a substantial amount of fuel settlements coming up that are all going to fall outside of that 24, or beyond the 24-month barrier. Because back in a couple of years ago, we hedged 46 months out at one point in time, and that was the furthest month out. But those months are still future settlements. They've not yet occurred. And so we've got contracts settling here that go into 2015 involving about 2.8 million gallons, or dollars of, excuse me, 2.8 million gallons of fuel. And those will all be 32 months or so in that ballparkish area. I don't know if that addresses your question.
Does that help, Mark?
That helps.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? This is up, we're going to need to take action on this. So do we have a motion to approve the policy?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions for Mr. Lang? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries, I think. This is kind of a quiet eyes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us into our next item, which is the update of the committee charters. I believe Bonnie's going to be making that presentation.
Before you tonight is Agenda Item Seven related to the committee charters and charter amendments. In essence, this item will amend the charters to reflect the changes requested by the board and present for approval the Ethics Committee Charter, which is modeled in part by the provisions of the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct related to business transactions. In short, this item in total will modify the membership of the Operational Oversight and Finance Committee, the Planning and Project Development Committee, the Audit Committee, and the Compensation and Pension Committee to allow for five members with the chair serving as an ex officio member. Also, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee will be renamed to be the Intergovernmental Relations and Public Affairs Committee and established as a standing committee of the Board of Trustees. This committee will be composed of all sitting members of the board, and if the full membership is not present, then the committee's actions will only be advisory in nature and no final action will be able to be taken at such meeting. The Ethics Committee will be established as a standing committee of the board, as provided by the bylaws, under the terms provided in the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct related to business transactions. The ad hoc real estate purchase and development committee will be reconstituted under the terms and conditions that were in the charter at the time that it was created and the previous term, under the previous term, except that it will become a standing committee, again with five members and the chair serving as an ex officio committee member. In the process of looking at all these committee charters, we did also discover that the ad hoc accessibility, the ad hoc Accessible Transit Advisory Committee was an ad hoc committee, but it has been existing and ongoing for a number of years. So we have added that to be a standing committee and have it composed of five members, just as the other committees are, with the chair serving as an ex officio member. All other ad hoc committees will still remain the same. They will be formed with the membership determined at the time of its creation. Included in this action is the Ethics Committee Charter. It's attached for your review. In essence, it tracks the language from the Code of Conduct. It also outlines that the responsibilities of the committee will be to assure that the Board of Trustees and the board appointees, the board, when the board makes appointees to its various committees, they are also subject to the Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics. So the committee will be responsible for assuring that the board and those appointees are knowledgeable and compliant with the Code of Ethics and maintain the standards of conduct outlined in the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct. They will also deal with complaints that are alleged against members of the board, and a brief overview of that process is outlined in the charter. It is more fully outlined, and it refers back to the actual Code of Ethics. And finally, the committee will be responsible for the annual review of the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct to assure that it is in line with what the Board of Trustees wants that policy to look like for this agency. So if you have any questions or comments, I would be happy to...
Bonnie, before we move into discussion, I think the chair will entertain a motion to approve, and then we can discuss it.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr.?
Quick question, Bonnie. On the annual review of the ethics and the backup material, when does that occur?
It would start upon the first meeting of the, that would be the first review period, when the committee is established and appointed by the board, and then this, we would start the annual process.
So that's the commencement of it, and so if that subcommittee chooses to do its amendments in, that's when it would start the process?
I mean, it doesn't require amendments, but it just requires that everyone take a look at it. This first go-around, there may be some changes, amendments and updates that would occur. And then thereafter, once we get it at a place where the board is happy with it, then annually you'll take a look at it just to make sure that it is where you want it to be. Because this, the Code of Ethics, it is applicable to the Board of Trustees, but it also applies to the agency as a whole. So we want to make sure that the board is satisfied with what that policy represents.
Thank you.
Dr. Gambetta?
Yes, I had initiated the ethics component at the executive committee. And I have one question, Bonnie, counsel, excuse me, counsel for you, and I think I know the answer. On the second sentence under meetings, special meetings may be called as deemed necessary by the chair. That refers to the board chair or the chair of the committee?
It was intended to be the chair of the committee, and we actually just caught that.
And because it goes back on the fourth sentence and says the chair of the Ethics Committee. So just to clarify that would be, I think, a good improvement. Thank you.
You know, if I could, I have a question. I think I understand the value we're trying to achieve here. What we're trying to achieve is elevating the level of public confidence in terms of ethics accountability. And I think that that's important, and to not make it an ad hoc as-needed kind of thing, but have it done on a more ongoing basis and let the organization, let the community know that we think it's an important, either we want to have this constant or this continuous Ethics Committee. But what I'm concerned about is we put ourselves in the position of policing ourselves. In other words, it would be five board members plus the chair as an ex officio board member policing the 11 board members. And so has there ever been any consideration of having an independent ongoing Ethics Committee appointed by the board, but that would be made up of citizens, that would be independent reviewers of complaints against board members, and maybe even follow-up on appeals from complaints against employees as well? Has that ever been considered?
In the past, there was some discussions about that with the board and among staff, and the decision at that time was to keep it as an internal policy. I will say that while a committee, an Ethics Committee, had not been previously established in the form that it is now, I think it's fair to say that the executive committee did look and did discuss the ethics policy. And I think it's important for the board, particularly new board members and members of the public, to recognize that annually each board member and each senior staff person is responsible for executing the Code of Ethics and acknowledging that they are responsible for complying with it. And that is an annual, ongoing responsibility of the senior staff and the Board of Trustees, which has been ongoing for a number of years. So this is an even greater heightened process for ethics for this agency. But I just wanted to be clear that it is not something, and not that you were saying that, but to be clear to those listening...
But I understood the purpose for having an ad hoc in the past was because depending on the nature of the complaint, the chair would appoint a committee to review, ad hoc committee to review the complaint. That would, the individual community members would not have a conflict themselves.
Yes. It was to assure that a committee member did not have a conflict and to draw upon the expertise of a particular board member who would be better suited to hear a particular complaint that was...
And in that context, then it would make sense if we're going to overhaul a little bit the way we're doing that, why not do it, consider, for example, the option of having it done independently?
I think that's a great idea.
Further that accountability perspective. And I'll suggest that maybe since we have a bylaws committee, and I believe Catherine's going to be chairing for us, if we're reviewing the bylaws in the coming months, you know, maybe it's something that the bylaws committee could look at and review in more detail and get, you know, get a better feel for what other entities are doing, what other public bodies are doing. I know the City of San Antonio has a policy with an independent Ethics Committee, and I don't know what other MTAs are doing. But maybe come back to the board with a recommendation on amendments to the bylaws, and implicit in those amendments to the bylaws would be a different way of how we structure the Ethics Committee or review how to do the Ethics Committee.
If I may chime in, I think that's a great idea, because one of the things that I think we didn't benefit from having the opportunity to have an ad hoc committee is that, you know, in those situations where perhaps there were questions, I don't think that was ever utilized, perhaps. And it left it to individual, I guess, the chair's discretion to decide whether to invoke it or to trigger the process. And I'm not really sure, frankly, if that was the process. But it, I know that when we were dealing a year or so ago with issues of conflicts of interest related to the streetcar alignment and so forth, perhaps there wasn't a clear enough process utilized at that time. I would say that there wasn't. And I know that I personally would go around a committee meeting saying, okay, you external auditor, are you the person that maybe we should turn to at this time? All of that said, I think that VIA suffers when there isn't a clear, transparent, dispassionate review of ethics questions. I think we can all strive to uphold those standards, but unless the public sees that that's, that we're held accountable to an independent body like you're suggesting, which I think is an excellent idea, perhaps there would be a question nevertheless, you know, are we exercising discretion to protect somebody on the board or what have you, which is not what we should be leaving any question about. So I like very much your suggestion. You stole my idea, and you read my mind. Because I do think that although this is a good thing to move from an ad hoc situation to have a fixed committee, you can do some committee work, look at your ethics rules and so forth, you know, and I was going to ask you, like, if there was an ethics question regarding one of the appointed committee members, then we get back to the idea of a chair having to then replace that person, perhaps, to sit in, over the conflict question. So again, it triggers some kind of a, there's a hiccup there in terms of process, I think, potentially. So maybe there isn't. But my point is still that the independence thing is still strong, and having an internal committee from, of the board maybe doesn't address things adequately, is my concern.
We'd be happy to.
I do think it's valid to say we need to tell the community that this is an important issue for us. Ethics is an important value for us. And I think that's what we're trying to reinforce. I don't know, Dr. Gambetta, if you want to...
There's multiple components. So one is the symbolic value, but secondly is the tangible component as well of conflicts of interest that tend to be individualized. And I respect what Doug had said, and I had stated at the initial meeting concerning at the executive committee. I wanted to elevate this to, first of all, because it was consistent with, as I read the policy documents, the ethics policy document and Code of Conduct, to have a standing committee. In a sense, if you invoke it ad hoc on a particular individual or case, there's sort of a stigma that attaches to it regardless of outcome of that ethics violation. So I think a standing committee is the most appropriate. Secondly, is it's both accountability and transparency. Both are essential components. Third, I guess, I have no opposition to moving it to the bylaws committee for a broader review and would support that in either case, an independent or a board-selected committee, or a hybrid, as I had seen this sort of, this developing, a hybrid situation on ethics between board and independents. But I'm willing to delegate that responsibility to the bylaws committee, especially with the understanding that A, it would be a standing committee that is formed, and to come back and report to the board what the composition of that committee would be. Finally, in answer to the chair's questions, there are independent committees that review ethics, such as the city. There are board or legislative, an example is the legislature polices itself. And of course, we know that in both cases, they've eliminated all the unethical behavior in both, the legislature and the city councils. But humor aside, I think that we need this committee. I think it takes, it's fine with me to move it to the bylaws committee for a fuller vetting and reflection on this. And I'm very glad that it has been brought to this level at this time, and I thank the chairman for that.
Yeah, of course.
So I would...
Hold on. I'm sorry, go ahead. You would move to...
Is there more comments?
Are there more comments, more questions?
In which case I would move to have the Ethics Committee be a standing committee and to have it reviewed and refined by, in terms of its composition and nature, by the bylaws committee with a report back to this full board in a timely fashion.
To elaborate on that motion, you would take it out of being approved today and moved to the Ethics Committee, I mean, to the bylaws committee?
The understanding that it would be a standing committee.
We have a motion on the table now.
A motion and a second on the floor.
And so we have to amend that motion, I believe.
Or withdraw it.
Or just make a substitute motion. So, which is a later motion would be a substitute motion.
Mr. Chairman, how about I withdraw the second that I put on the original motion? And so I'll be drawing my second that I originally made. And I do have one comment when it's appropriate.
Okay. So you were drawing the second to the original motion.
Yeah, now you don't have a motion.
So you want to make a comment, then?
Yes. Just a quick question, Dr. Gambetta. So the, your support of sending it to the bylaws committee, as I sense that the chair is as well, but your intent still is that when it comes out of the bylaws committee, that a standing committee be created in addition to a outside committee?
No, that a standing committee be, that the composition of the committee, the composition of the committee be recommended by the bylaws vetting of the process.
And my only, my only additional comment...
It may be a different terminology that we would deploy.
Thanks. That cleared it out. My only additional comment is that as we go through the process, through the bylaws committee, no need to recreate the wheel. I mean, this has been done in jurisdictions throughout the state, at the local level, at the, lots of different levels, as you pointed out, effective or not, but it's out there. So there's lots of guides out there to utilize. So I'll certainly be supportive of the main motion whenever it comes down.
Okay. And so the initial motion was made by whom? Who made the initial motion?
I don't know. I seconded it, but I did not make it.
Was it you, Richard, or...
Well, it fails.
Okay, why don't we just say, there was no motion on the table. The chair will, yeah, will now entertain a motion.
I would move the Ethics Committee and refer it to the bylaws committee for a fuller vetting and refinement, and with the understanding that it would be an ongoing committee reporting to this board, and that the bylaws committee make recommendations to this board for its composition and nature.
Second.
And approve the other charters.
Oh, you want that? Oh, and to, okay, fine. If you want, one large... If you want, in one large, in one, in one large package rather than two, yes.
Approve all the committee charters that are on the table with the exception that the ethics committee will be referred to the bylaws committee for refinement.
Second.
Is that a fair way of saying that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And understanding that it be come back as a, as a ongoing-
Standing committee.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Clarification.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead, Mr.-
Mr. Chairman, now, I've, I've heard the, the motion made. Does that mean that there's an expectation that the standing committee would already be composed of people to serve?
No.
Even after, I'm talking about after it comes back from being vetted by the bylaws committee? Is it, is it Dr. Gambetta's expectation that people will be appointed to that committee before we have to even deal with an ethics issue?
What do you mean by people?
People in, appointees. Will it be, will the standing committee have a composition?
Well, I called it an ongoing committee.
Or will it have a composition guideline? The difference is, will have five or six people serving on it or will have five or six positions that'll be appointed by the board at the time that they're needed?
I think, I think, as I understood it, if I may, I think what it's, all of this is on the drawing board as to that committee. It may come back that it's an externalized committee, it could be a hybrid committee, it could be internalized. None of that's being defined right now. As, so the, the ethics committee and what it would look like is not being determined today. And there's nothing, but it's going to be sent to the bylaws committee for exploration as to, you know, options.
Got it.
And that'll be then brought back and then we will consider that as a board. Is that correct?
But I was only, I was only curious about what Dr. Gambetta's expectation is.
That's why I sort of, I thought carefully worded it as an ongoing committee-
Is it an ongoing-
-rather than an ad hoc committee or a standing committee. Standing committees may be defined by the bylaws as composed by the, the board itself.
As I understood Gamb, Dr. Gambetta's motion, it was that it would come back as an ongoing committee and it would not be appointed as needed. It would be an ongoing committee. It would be there all the time to receive any complaints or investigate any complaints.
So there will be-
But it would, but they're going to consider options of how to constitute.
Okay.
It would not be ad hoc. It would not be on a as-needed basis.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's my accommodation.
My only concern, Dr. Gambetta, for raising that particular question, because if, if it comes back from the bylaws committee and it's composed of one or two board members and those board members become subjects of that ethics issue, then now we've got a bigger issue, which is so-and-so serves on the ethics committee, now he's under investigation by the ethics committee.
Well, Bonnie, as, Council has covered that aspect already, and that would be something in the composition of the committee and the nature of the membership, that they would be removed if there's a complaint against one of the board members, one of, one of the committee members.
It is specifically stated, but even if it were not, if someone who is serving on the committee now or later were a subject of the complaint, they, this, this version automatically removes them from the committee.
But although they may be removed from the committee, Madam Counsel, it won't change the fact that they were, when the press gets it, they were members of the ethics committee when they became a subject of the ethics committee.
That would be true.
Okay.
Yes, that would be true.
Thank you, Madam Counsel.
And so we've got to be careful who we would appoint.
That's right.
But that's a totally different issue. I mean-
Bylaws is a good place for it.
But at least it possibly would not be board members. Okay, does the board understand the motion? Are we, are we okay on that? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the item on the agenda with the exception of the ethics committee being referred to the bylaws committee for coming back with the review of the bylaws and doing, further refine how it would be constituted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is the modern street car update.
We'll brief you on some of the current activities or, that are going on with the street car project, followed by a discussion on the North Alamo Street and Flores Street design options, and then followed by some upcoming activities. As far as current activities, the environmental or NEPA process is well underway. We have begun to receive the technical memorandums or reports for the, the various components of the environmental review. And so that, those reports will eventually be the backbone or will make up the actual environmental document. We've also been having ongoing coordination meetings with the Texas Historical Commission and to discuss the street car operations and how it relates to the historic structures or eligible structures along the corridor. And we anticipate having the final environmental finding sometime in late summer or early fall. As well as the preliminary engineering is well underway on the LPA as well. In fact, early May and, and next week actually, we anticipate receiving the 15% track plans. And we have been having ongoing meetings with the utility companies, including CPS, SAWs, AT&amp;T, and started identifying actual conflicts along the corridor. And we just finished up a meeting with the car builders, the car manufacturers, having one-on-one meetings. And what we did, as you know, we just received comments from the various car builders on the industry review. And so it was a follow-up to get further clarifications on their comments and relate to them some of the intent of what we plan on coming out on our actual vehicle RFP. So moving into the design options, as you know, when the LPA was approved in September of 2013, the board asked that as part of the LPA, that staff investigate the design options for North Alamo Street and Flores Street options. With the North Alamo option basically being where the current LPA has two-way operations, street car operations along Broadway, the North Alamo option would have, it would operate as a Broadway-Alamo couplet with one direction along Broadway and the opposite direction along Alamo Street. The Flores Street option consists of the connection between Cesar Chavez to Commerce Buena Vista and the LPA where that connection is made via the Santa Rosa Street. The Flores option would be looking at, at Flores Street. So the design criteria that we use to evaluate these options was essentially the same criteria that we used when we were doing the alternative analysis and studying the various routes in downtown, which consisted of the cost, ridership, environmental considerations, economic development, the actual operations of the street car, impacts to traffic, connectivity, and integration with the bus service. So I'm going to talk about the Flores Street option first. And so with, related to cost and ridership, that the Flores Street option versus Santa Rosa is actually, it's a three to $5 million increase. And that is primarily due, it's a slightly longer route, so there's more infrastructure required for that. Because of that, because going up Flores Street, you hit a little more denser employment base there with City Hall and the civic core. The ridership actually went up. It went up to 100,000 more annual riders or a 7% increase. But one of the concerns with this is that the city actually has a bond project along Commerce Street from St. Mary's to Santa Rosa. And so there would be an overlap. If we go up Flores Street, there would be an overlap. And basically what the city has relayed to us, that if we go the Flores Street option, that they will basically delay or kill that Commerce Street project. Environmental considerations, that the Flores Street versus Santa Rosa option, that the Flores Street, there are numerous envi, sensitive environmental receptors along the Flores Street, basically including Main and Military Plaza, as well as the City Hall, Courthouse, and the Cathedral. And some of these issues may require that when we get into the document, the documentation environmental, it may push us into the 4F process, which would definitely have schedule implications as well as cost implications as well. So operations and service, traffic is, mostly I'll probably know, the Flores Street option is considerably more congested than the Santa Rosa. So basically, it would probably, most likely result in impacts to the street car operations and a little more unreliable schedule as far as the street car itself. Connect, connectivity, actually, the Flores Street was probably a little better because it was serving the Civic Center and the, basically, City Hall and, and the Courthouse. And then related, we did an analysis to the existing bus services as well, and there really wasn't any difference between the Flores Street or Santa Rosa options with, as it related to the existing bus service. We reached out to the city to get their impact on the two options, and basically, they had both negatives and positives to the Flores Street option. Of course, the big one was the negative, as I just relayed about the Commerce Street project and how the Flores Street option, there would be a overlap of the street car onto the Commerce project, which would result in them either delaying or, or killing the Commerce Street improvement project. Their concern, as we noted in ours, was also the congestion along Flores Street and, and what the street car operations would do to that, that congestion, including the signaling, pedestrians, and the on-street parking. Some of the positives was the connectivity. Of course, it, you know, it's connecting to the Main Plaza, City Hall, and the Courthouse. And they also thought that the short-term economic potential along Flores Street was greater than Santa Rosa. So going to the North Alamo Street option, you know, when we presented at the PPD Committee, there were a number of questions with regards to that particular option that was kind of outside the analysis or the valuation criteria we use, including the constructions, or the impacts during construction, as well as, you know, how the street car would operate, as we all know this past week, like during Fiesta and the parades. So, so what we're recommending is basically to proceed with the Santa Rosa option and eliminate the Flores option, but that we will basically do some initial analysis along the Alamo Street, and then we will come back to PPD Committee next month and to answer the questions that came up in this, the last PPD meeting. And then finally, some of the upcoming activities, as I just mentioned, we will come back to you next month with the North Alamo options analysis. Next month, we would like to schedule a special board workshop to specifically talk about the project delivery methods for the various contracts, specifically the track and civil along the alignment and the maintenance facility. And, and then finally, talk about our issue, the vehicle procurement, our, basically the feedback we got from the car manufacturers and actually issue the vehicle RFP. So with that, we'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any, we don't, no action required today, right?
There would be an action-
Yeah.
-via the Flores option.
Okay, 'cause, and our, and our memo said there was, there was no action required to be information on it.
What was staff recommendation on the Flores Street option? Yeah?
To kill it.
Okay. So staff was waiting for a motion for that?
Correct. That's the staff recommendation.
So move.
Mr. Chair, well-
Can we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a second?
I mean, if it's allowable.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the, the PPD Committee vetted this and had, thank, thank you for your, for the vigorous exchange of ideas that day. It's much appreciated. And the, the PPD Committee thought that we should eliminate even with 100,000 additional riders, which was one of the major thrusts for an initial discussion of the Flores Street option, as well as access to the historical sites that people have interest, while still preserving the integrity of the overall route and the, the scope of the route. The possibilities for the environmental analysis are simply too great to, to risk delays and the increased congestion along that corridor. So the PPD Committee fully endorsed unanimously the, the staff recommendation on Flores.
Any questions or comments?
One more question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
In your learned opinion, when can we break ground?
Right now, the current schedule is we will begin construction in basically early 2016.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have a question. You estimated the increased cost on the Flores Street option at $3 to $5 million?
Yes.
And that's with the understanding that there was unknown about archaeological impact and other environmental issues that may come up?
Yes. It was mainly tied to the fact that it's a slightly longer-
Right.
-a route, and so additional infrastructure. And so there, there, there wasn't really fully vetted, you know, all the environmental and what that potential cost would be if we, if you did go through there, we, because we just didn't vet all the environmental issues that might be encountered along there. Other than we just identified that there's a lot of sensitive receptors along that route.
And, and on the Alamo Street option, there would not be additional costs because you're already got to pin two sets of rail, one going north and one going south.
Right.
It's kind of relocated, so-
It's relocated.
The incremental cost would be an additional block.
Right.
Maybe.
Right. That's, that's essentially exactly-
Depending on how you, how you organize it. And I guess, one of the other, I guess, more of a comment is, it seems like anything we do in the central business district area, in the downtown area, near downtown area is going to have the potential threat, threat of rain to archaeological, environmental issues. I mean, we're going to have a secas all over the place that we're going to run into. We got one right outside the door here.
Yes.
And so, and so I think there's going to be that, that challenge anyway. But at this point, though, the recommendation is to eliminate the Flores option and continue to do additional analysis on the, on the North Alamo Street option.
That is correct.
And what was the feedback that you received from the city on the North Alamo option?
If I can, Brent, last evening, about four o'clock, we held a meeting with the city. They are going to come to the PPD meeting to give some feedback, but their initial reaction is supportive of the staff's recommendation on the Alamo Street, that it would be better to build two tracks on Broadway, but they will come and speak to us about that option. And we spoke to them about the, the construction impacts on Alamo and utility companies and things like that. So there's a lot of that discussion that happened at PPD. We went and had the discussion with the city, and honestly, it just happened at four o'clock last evening. So we'll be prepared to bring that to PPD here in two weeks.
Did I hear you say the staff recommendation is to maintain both lines on, on Broadway?
That's what it is right now.
That's what it was to PPD, but the recommendation today is to continue the analysis.
That's correct. The, what we will-
And I think, I mean, I don't want to go into all the positive aspects of, of North Alamo or replay the-
I'm just trying to clarify. I'm just trying to understand.
But there's lots of issues that are at stake here. And I'd be very happy to hear from the city.
Yeah, Dr. Gambetta is exactly right, and Chairman, we will be bringing more information forward.
And so that's one of the reasons we're going to wait to do, do further analysis.
That is correct. That meeting just occurred last evening, so.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the Modern Streetcar Advisory Committee, and Deani, I believe, is going to be making that presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here this evening to present and to provide information really to the board on a possible action on a proposed structure regarding the creation of a VIA Streetcar Advisory Committee. As you are well aware, and you just heard, VIA has been moving very strongly on the modern streetcar. It is one of the six major improvements that we have in our five-year plan, and since the initial development phases of the modern streetcar project and, and the entire system are underway, it was believed that the VIA Board of Trustees would like to create a Streetcar Advisory Committee. With that in mind, and because the board has specifically indicated that this is a key component in VIA's continued public involvement and engagement with the community, that advisory recommendations, and I stress the word advisory, that could be provided to the board, would assist the board in the decision-making processes related to this particular project. This particular committee, and as it comes before you, is really a advisory resource again, or a sounding board that the VIA Board of Trustees could utilize with respect to the modern streetcar project, in order to help balance a lot of the issues and concerns expressed by the community at large, certainly the business sector and other major civic organizations and stakeholders. This advisory committee would be focused only on review and guidance on design and development and construction issues related to the modern streetcar project, and again, it would be a key component of our public engagement activities on the project so that the Board of Trustees could hear directly from the different organizations and major community stakeholders that have great interest in this. We have suggested a composition for this advisory committee with particular individuals or representatives from certain potential stakeholder groups. We are not providing that listing today. Today, really, your action would be to create the advisory committee, and I'm sure we will have a great more discussion on where these major stakeholders would come from, but we have listed for your review a particular group of stakeholders. In addition to those stakeholder groups that we might recommend that we would take representatives from, we believe that there would be representatives that on an as-needed basis could provide a great deal of support to the committee, because they provide more technical or more in-depth information, such as the city of San Antonio, Fair County, SAHA, the San Antonio Housing Authority, the San Antonio Water System, City Public Service, and maybe even SAMCO or other organizations like that that are a little distinct. The chair of the Streetcar Advisory Committee, staff is recommending, and members of the committee would be appointed by the VIA Board of Trustees. This structure again allows the, the board to receive direct input from the general public directly to you. We have done a little proposed organizational structure, and if I could go down this, we can kind of go there for you, that really, this particular committee reports directly to the board. So, it is an advisory committee that has VIA staff support, but the members are from potential stakeholder groups, as this policy board defines them. We took the liberty of kind of laying out a schedule that we could present to people who you might want us to contact, so the concept, of course, would be approved, if, if approved and you take action this evening, would be approved to create the committee tonight. We would then send invitation letters to the stakeholder groups, we would create the committee no later than May 19th, and have some sort of a kickoff organizational meeting by May 26. Obviously, the VIA Board Chair and board members are extremely interested in this, and I know that IGR Chair, the Chair of our committee, Mr. Allison, and Board Member Allison is again extremely engaged, as are all the members of the board. We have recommended that for the remainder of 2014, this group meet on the second Monday. We tried to find a scheduling for them because we know that these people will have very tight schedules, and that they will be doing this type of work for the board, so we have kind of laid out a 2014 and 2015 kind of dates for them to consider. So, this is the action that I am requesting from you this evening, and I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a.
Thank you, Deani, any questions?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I shall move.
A motion and a second to approve the creation of the committee.
Yes, I was looking at the timeline, so if we approve, it's April 29th, and letters will go out in May 5th. Looking at the representatives for the potential stakeholder groups, I did want to add the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, and also the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I think their input would be invaluable.
And, and Board Member Lee, I apologize, because that, that has been a recommendation, and they're not on this final listing that's before you, this is the initial draft, so certainly, we will add those as per your recommendation, absolutely.
Also, I would recommend someone from the smaller suburban municipalities, because the streetcar is not just about downtown, it's about the city, county, and region, including the other municipalities.
I think one of our goals is going to be to try to have it in the range of 15 to 21 members, so not all of these, these are examples of potential stakeholder groups. On the 19th, is that a special meeting that we're going to have on the 19th? It says the approval would be on the 19th, on your schedule, the creation of the committee.
Creation.
Does that mean that the board will reconvene to approve at that time?
I think what we were planning to do, Mr. Chairman, was to send out a potential list and to ask you, all members of the board, for recommendations, and to review a potential listing that staff has already been working on, so that we can tweak that and come up with what you believe is the correct number of people for this group, and obviously, we do have an IGR meeting coming up on May 8th, so that may be, Mr. Chair, a, a point of discussion, I don't know where Jeff and Board Member Allison may want to go with that, but certainly, we can have the listing available for consideration of some.
I suggest, I suggest the invitation letters to potential stakeholder groups go out on May the 9th, so that on May the 8th, we could cover the composition and propose specific people to, with the IGR Public Affairs Committee, that makes that pretty straightforward, then the committee can, can, you know, decide, okay, this is the right mix of organizations, these are the right individuals, we'll send those letters out at that point.
Got it.
And then, the board would have essentially said, these are the people that we would find satisfied.
But right now, we've got 25 to 30 people.
Right.
Right.
And the list keeps growing, but.
So, rather than send out letters in advance, why don't we bring a list back?
Right.
On, on May 8th, since we now have that meeting date set.
Is that okay with the makers of the motion and the second? Okay, any other comments or questions, then, with that understanding? Now, we'll see this again on May 8th, with the recommendation of the, of the group to be selected, the entities to be represented, yes.
The ACCD may be directly involved and may be, depending on the contingencies, incredibly involved. Yeah.
That's the North Alamo Street option.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's, and that's moving their new headquarters.
We're not releasing any information, no.
Okay, okay, so you added that one as.
I will add that, and I will have everything ready as, as per directives this evening.
Sounds like staff has their hands full. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any additional questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Down there, Catherine and.
Oh, Catherine, you went with Anthony?
They went in and did it, they beat you to it.
Oh, okay. We have a motion and a second.
She's going second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We're adjourned.